Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for City Council Resolution 21-0062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearing. This is our fourth quarterly review. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joining me to my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. To my right, Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you.
To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee, on behalf of Mayor Scott and his administration, City Administrator Chris Shorter and Sophia G., on behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, Matt Stegman.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. I'm the Chair. I've been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee. Joining us online, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. He's excused from being in person due to exposure to someone with COVID. With that, we will get started. Director, I believe you have a slide deck, or your team does. Mr. Williams, correct? Did you get your access privileges to be able to share? Excellent. Please feel free to take it away.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Councilmembers, Baltimore City residents, and interested parties. I'm Shamaya Kearney. I serve as the Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. I'm joined today by Deputy Director Elizabeth Tatum, Project Manager Josh Wilson, and Project Manager Patrick Williams. Today, I'm pleased to share an overview of the Annual Recovery Plan Performance Report, which was submitted to the United States Department of Treasury on July 29, 2022. This report marks a little over one year since the inception of the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, and I am proud of the work that this team has conducted since July 2021. That work includes, but is not limited to, assisting Mayor Scott and the administration with committing $482 million on various areas, including food insecurity, violence interruption, reentry services, workforce development, COVID-19 health response, affordable housing, homeless services, and more. It also includes coordinating with agencies on implementation plans, budgets, and developing the tools and systems to enable effective tracking and monitoring to set up entities using these funds for success and for the benefit of Baltimore City. While the effects of COVID-19 happen quickly and continue to occur, the associated recovery will not happen as swift. This is particularly true as COVID cases begin to resurge and another public health emergency is upon us. Local and state jurisdictions across this country continue to grapple with the unpredictable nature of these public health emergencies and its associated health and economic impacts. As such, planning, budgeting, and spend rates can be challenged. Concerns have been raised internally and externally about spend rates, and to accurately assess those concerns and to understand national trends, we analyzed data submitted to the U.S. Department of Treasury as of April 1, 2022, the most recent data available. We also collaborated with our university partner, the University of Baltimore, to develop selection criteria to identify peer municipalities. This criteria includes, but is not limited to, allocation amount, population, economic similarities, proximity to Baltimore City, among other criteria. Accordingly, based on these criteria, the following areas were selected: Baltimore County, Maryland, Montgomery County, Maryland, Washington, D.C., St. Louis, Missouri, Detroit, Michigan, and Boston, Massachusetts. Before I go any further, if we can go to the next slide, just to ensure that we are all on the same page about what we're speaking about in terms of financial terminology. As a reminder, a commitment is our public announcement, which includes the total investment in a given area. So, for example, MoED will receive $30 million for workforce development. When we speak about obligations, that is the budgeted amount for a specific fiscal year as included in our executed agreements with agencies or nonprofits and as we report to the United States Treasury. Again, as an example, $3.7 billion was budgeted to MoED for FY22. That is 3.7 billion of their $30 million commitment. An expenditure means an amount that's charged to ARPA accounts, and that funding has moved to the organization, and that amount is also reported to Treasury. As an example, $305,000 was spent by MoED as of April 2022 and charged to ARPA accounts. So again, just want to ensure that we are all on the same page in terms of financial terminology. If we could go to the next slide. So here we'll discuss Tier One City Obligations. Again, for understanding, Tier One cities are defined as those with a population of $250,000 or more. This graphic shows the percent of funds obligated based on the grant funding that each city or municipality received. Note that Baltimore City is in the latter half of the funds obligated when compared to peer cities, but ahead of all but one peer city, excluding counties. When we further analyze this data, we learned that Boston has obligated $55 million in general revenue replacement, meaning that the city has not obligated large amounts of funds to programs and services. Our analysis also indicates that grant awardees may not be reporting all obligations until there are also expenditures, while Baltimore City generally reports all obligations that we've committed regardless of whether they're spent or not. Next slide, please. In a comparison of amount allocated to amount spent, Baltimore City ranks 61 out of 87 across peer cities. This data on its face appears that Baltimore City is spending slowly than other peer cities. However, further analysis reveals the following: Baltimore City is generally in line with the spending rates of other peer cities. In addition, many of the top cities in this graphic directed the majority of their funding to general revenue replacement or salaries, and again, that means not directly spending on programs and services as Baltimore City has. Only one tier city, and that's Anaheim, yes, Tier One City, Anaheim, California, has expended all of its ARPA funding, and according to our analysis, again, these funds were spent on salaries, departmental personnel costs, and to some degree, city services. Next slide. As discussed in other oversight hearings, Treasury requires for obligations and expenditures to be reported by expenditure category. While there are broad uses of funds such as infrastructure, negative economic impacts in health, the expenditure categories further break down how funds are spent. For example, examples of expenditure categories include household assistance, vaccinations, demolition, support for unhoused persons, and numerous other categories. This graphic shows a comparison of Tier One cities across expenditure categories. Baltimore has spent more on negative economic impacts in public health compared to other Tier One cities. For Baltimore City, programs and services that address negative economic impacts include the Economic Recovery Fund, which provided assistance to small businesses, nonprofits, childcare centers, hotels and individual artists, workforce development programs like Higher Up and Train Up, youth works, and job training programs for justice-involved individuals, food insecurity, guaranteed income pilot program, homeless services, and affordable housing development, as well as others. Other cities have cumulatively spent about 70% of their funding on revenue replacement. Next slide. Looking more specifically at peer municipality spending by expenditure category, we find that the majority of peer municipalities have spent most of their funding to address negative economic impacts, as evidenced by the yellow bar in the chart. Peer municipalities have also spent less funding on revenue replacement, as evidenced by the light blue bar in the chart. Next slide. So I shared a lot of data with a lot of different types of analyses, but these are the key takeaways. Year one of ARPA has been a year focused on planning and beginning program implementation. As such, spend will be a little slower. Cities and municipalities across the country have been slow to spend, but there are several articles by respected organizations that note this fact, and Baltimore City is not an anomaly. Baltimore City and other peer cities have obligated most of its funding for programs and services aligned with addressing negative economic impacts. Compared to other Tier One cities, Baltimore City has spent most of its funding on programs and services related to health and negative economic impacts. Again, over 70% of all Tier One cities have cumulatively spent allocated funding for revenue replacement. Because revenue replacement is mostly directed to salaries, personnel costs, and to some government services, this aids in the appearance that other cities are spending faster. Next slide, please. With that, I'll transition into the overview of the Treasury report. Just a couple of key points to again ensure that we're all on the same page. The period of performance for the Treasury report that was submitted covers April 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022. The Department of Treasury does not factor in commitments, only obligations and expenditures. Data that are reported to Treasury by expenditure category are at specific intervals, meaning quarterly. Therefore, data may not align with information that is included in council reports or our public-facing dashboard. In addition, many agencies are still fully designing and implementing programs. Therefore, performance data are limited. Additional data on required performance measures will be included in Treasury reports and in council reports as programs are further implemented and data becomes available. Next slide. The Recovery Office submitted the Annual Recovery Plan Performance Report to U.S. Treasury on July 29 as required by law. The report includes the several components: a retrospective and prospective look at the use of ARPA funds, information on efforts to promote equitable outcomes, community outreach efforts, use of evidence, performance data, as well as project and expenditure Next slide. Thank you. Also want to recap the changes since the last report, and by last report, I mean the last quarterly report that was submitted to Treasury in April of 2022. For project-specific measurements, there are certain projects where new project measurements were required. Those included for broadband and digital equity, the number of planned miles of fiber and number of places served. Also included, community anchor institutions, residences, and housing units. For workforce development, new requirements included number of workers enrolled in sectorial job training programs, number of workers completing sectorial training, and number of people participating in summer youth employment programs. This report also included written justifications for any capital projects over $10 million. And to date, the only $10 million or over project that we had to submit a written justification for were our recreation and parks-related projects. Next slide. The new projects that we reported in this report include improving Baltimore's recreation infrastructure, so that's the recreation and parks, investment of $41 million, and increasing economic security through guaranteed income pilot. Again, that's a $4.8 billion investment. New expenditures that were included in this report in the reporting period that did not have expenditures in the last Treasury report include guaranteed income pilot program, as well as ARPA project and progress evaluation. That is related to our university partners. Completed payments, all of our committed funding has been dispersed for the Economic Recovery Fund, and that's the $25 million that's been dispersed to our five fiscal Next slide. For new projects, again, that includes Baltimore Recreation and Parks, that includes money for pools, playgrounds, athletic courts, recreation centers, trails, and administration. Also, for our guaranteed income pilot program, a total investment of $4.8 million, which will be spent on providing $1,000 payments for 24 months to 200 young parents between the ages of 18 and 24 with limited household income. Next slide. Transitioning to expenditures and obligations that were reported, for the period of performance, the city of Baltimore reported 2.68 million in new obligations and 14.9 million in new expenditures. That's across the 25 projects across our 22 expenditure categories. Through June 2022, total expenditures increased by 46% to $42 million compared to the April 2022 report. Obligations increased by 3%, and our reported expenditures increased by 54%. Obligations and expenditures, this is just a breakdown of those obligations and expenditures by our various projects. I won't walk through all of those, but all of the major projects that we've identified and include administration, broadband, our economic recovery fund, COVID-19 response, Lexington Market, funding insecurity, all of those things have been included in any expenditures that are associated with those projects. In the appendix, there are just a few slides that provide changes from our April report to our July report, just so that you can see that at a more granular level. Again, won't walk through all of those, but certainly available for you to be able to review. On Slide 21. Include performance measures that we included in our council report, and these measures were included in the June council report, and our cumulative measures, adding together similar measures across projects. These are not the only measures that we're collecting data for, but again, many projects are new and still being implemented, and so as information becomes available, we will certainly be reporting that information. Lastly, on the last slide, all of our data, all reports, and our public-facing dashboard are available to the public at arp.baltimorecity.gov. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director. We've also been joined by Councilman Isaac Yitzchayfer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Director, the seven categories of spending on the slide, Tier One Cities expenditures by category. Are those how we report to Treasury? Are we categorized the funding?
Yes. So there are the eligible uses of funds, and that is how we report. So it's public health, negative economic impacts, et cetera.
But Treasury determines what those seven categories are, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then I noticed in the... I noticed in the comparison to other cities that the data is from April 1. Do we not have...
I'm sorry that the data is...
The comparison data with other comp cities, the data is through April 1 of 2022?
Yes.
Was July 1 data not yet available?
That's correct. This is based on data that was reported to the United States Treasury, and the data that they have publicly available across municipalities and jurisdictions is as of April 2022.
Do we know when we expect the July 1 data to be available on Treasury's website?
I don't know, but it tends to be about a quarter and a half behind, so I would imagine that July data will probably not be available until October or so.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the FY23 budget hearing on May 31, it was noted that none of the committed funds at the time had been allocated to restore city services that had been limited or stopped due to the pandemic, but that deliberations were ongoing and that money would eventually be allocated. At this time, how much funding has been allocated towards restoring those city services?
So, most recently, you may have heard the announcement about Clean Core, which is a $14.7 billion investment around city services, and so to address cleanliness and greening of the city. That's the most recent development, and there are others that are under deliberation, but I'll ask C.A.O. Shorter if there's anything that he'd like to add to that.
No.
Okay. Nothing to add outside of Clean Core?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. I was trying to communicate with DGS on the work that's being done outside. Could you ask the question again?
Okay. Did you have anything else to add outside of what Director Kearney provided about Clean Core?
Well, yes, sure. The Clean Core program ultimately is one that was announced just a few days ago. Clean Core is a program where we are going to be looking for the community and looking to residents to help assist the Department of Public Works in the cleaning of our city. Ultimately, 15 communities will be selected as part of this process. They will go through an RFP, so community organizations representing those respective neighborhoods will go through an RFP process and ultimately be selected as part of this program. The program will run a full two and a half years, the remaining period that ARPA is in place, and will be essentially empowering residents and community organizations to assist us with the cleaning and pickup of debris, loose litter, and other cleaning around the city.
Was there anything else to add outside of Clean Core? Is that the only item, additional item, that was for the restoration of city services? Is that the only one you guys have?
I may have missed your original question. Again, I was trying to deal with the work that's being done outside. Was your question about Clean Core, or was the question separate from...
Let me go back. In a previous hearing, we mentioned that we were going to be eventually allocating funds to city services. So at this time, I asked Director Kearney how much funding had been allocated towards restoring those city services. She did provide a mount. She did state that it was for Clean Core. So then she deferred to you if there were any other items. So I'm looking to see if there are any other items outside of Clean Core that we have allocated funds for.
Yes. I would say there are... The agencies, our agencies were the first in a list of investments that were made. I don't know that I can personally go through all of the proposals that were reviewed and funded. I will say that, for example, DPW will receive 10, close to 10 million for the use of repairs to government buildings and some of the sort of workforce needs around cleaning up and making sure that the facilities that our teams use to come in every day and do the work that will be making renovations and improvements there. I would actually need to go back. We did do a review a few months ago when this question was originally asked, a 311 service request and those issues around service requests that were still not responded to. A lot of work was done there. I just do not have on me today and right now a listing of those investments.
I'd also add funding that's been addressed or that will address vacancies, and we're pulling that amount for you now. But there's also funding that's going to be made available via the housing allocation that will also address vacancies, and we'll pull that number.
Okay. Thank you, Director Kearney. I did want to get into Clean Core, just a few additional questions, Mr. Chair. As our city engages in conversations on how to address the needs of our youth intersection workers, will those individuals be targeted for employment opportunities through Clean
So ultimately, I think as we are looking at proposals from community organizations, employment and employment development is a key component of this work. This is not just a cleaning up, a cleaning program. The program is intended to help to deal with some of the cleaning and greening in our city, but also just as important to help with employment development. And so for that reason, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development is also tied into this work, as DPW is leading with the Department of Planning, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and the key elements of what an appropriate employment development program should be are included and will be included in our evaluation of proposals from community organizations.
I would also add that there are a few nonprofits that have, that we have funded thus far, and others that we're considering funding that have also talked about workforce development and with the focus on youth. And so we have also made sure that MoED is in contact with those agencies to make sure that we are, we don't have a gap in workforce development and targeting our youth, as well as adults, and maybe some of our lower-skilled adults with those employment opportunities that we'll be trying to fund through ARPA.
Okay. And just as a follow-up, similar to the CHUM community cleanup pilot, will Clean Core staff also receive workforce development training, which may have the opportunity for full-term employment with DPW, knowing that that specific agency is having a bit of a time, like many of our agencies, in recruitment?
Yes. It's a great question and a great opportunity to talk about the very clear connection between what these opportunities will be and the opportunity for our, for DPW to use this program as a pool for recruitment. So you're absolutely right, Councilwoman, that we will be working to make sure that skills development is a very clear component of this program and that that will, where it is appropriate and where we can, lead to full-time employment with the city. This is absolutely what we have in mind in terms of dealing with some of the recruitment challenges and vacancies that exist at DPW. Ultimately, when it comes to CDL drivers, for example, though, you know, some additional training and certification licensure will be needed, but CDL drivers are not the only hard-to-fill position at DPW, and so we will absolutely be looking to use this program as a pool for permanent staff.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I do have additional questions, but I'll hold them for the next round. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So how much, has there been an allocation yet to DPW from ARPA money?
You just heard C.A.O. Shorter mention $10 million that will be going to DPW.
Okay. And where will that $10 million be going to?
For some of the facilities that and upgrades that are needed to some of the DPW facilities.
Okay. So out of the... And how much money's been allocated to date?
I'm sorry.
How much total money's been allocated to date? I think the last hearing we had was like $580 million.
That's not correct. It's 481.
480, I'm sorry. And so is that still the number that's allocated today?
That is still the number that is allocated today.
Okay. So out of 480, so $10 million's been allocated to DPW. So can you, can you just help me make sense of this project core? $15 million to clean up 15 neighborhoods. Is that, is that accurate? So like a million dollars per neighborhood?
It's a $14.7 billion investment. There are up to 15 neighborhoods that can be selected.
Okay. So we're going to spend about a million dollars per neighborhood on this cleaning program. I'm trying to understand, because right now, from what we heard from DPW is, you know, they have financial challenges and others in getting staffing and getting people and funding those positions and paying people what they need to get paid. $15 million is a lot of money, and we're still not picking up curbside recycling as required by law every week, and $15 million goes a very long way in solving that problem. So I'm just trying to understand the calculus on creating a program that essentially gives a million dollars to a community to hire people to clean up or to clean up in general when we have infrastructure that needs to be built on, and $15 million would be a game changer to those operations.
I appreciate that question, Councilman. It's not an either-or proposition. Clearly, we have an opportunity to correct some of the blight, abate some of the illegal dumping, deal with some of the trash within our communities, and to empower the community to assist DPW in that work is not an either-or. So we are not taking money from an agency and giving it to community. We are empowering DPW to do what it needs to do, and we're empowering the community to help. So ultimately, DPW will be in a leadership role here. DPW will be working with community. The, ultimately, the leadership of the program will be housed at DPW and in working with DPW. So we hope, the objective here and our aim here is to amplify the work that DPW is doing and for that to result in a cleaner Baltimore and one that residents, especially in those communities that are often not receiving the kinds of investments that others do, that they see the benefit of the American Rescue Plan dollars through a cleaner and a healthier community.
So I guess I still need some more clarity, because the, we don't have the foundation down pat yet. So even if you want to go and talk about the illegal dumping, for instance, right? If you want to come... If you want to come off the recycling thing, which is still mind-boggling to me, but that's a conversation for a different time. But even if you want to talk specific about that, so in my area, it's actually in Council Vice President Middleton's district, the Northwest Transfer Station, we both can tell you at length the challenges that go on in that transfer station. And the lines are always extremely long. I guarantee you right now, there's a line that goes all the way down to Wabash because of capacity challenges there. So when you talk about spending $10 million as a whole when $100 million wouldn't solve the infrastructure issues of DPW, but you throw $10 million there and then $15 million to cleaning up 15 neighborhoods, it just doesn't make sense. And I have, you know, and one of the neighborhoods, the possible neighborhoods for this program is in my district. I'm hoping that if you guys proceed with this, that that neighborhood will be selected. But that neighborhood's a prime example is they get a lot of illegal dumping because the transfer station line is so long. So folks don't want to wait for two and a half hours and kill their day waiting in line to properly dump these items, so they go and they dump it in the community. So we're going to send, we're going to give a community a million dollars in hopes they clean up temporarily, but we never actually dealt with the core root cause of the issue. That $15 million, if you had taken that or even taken $5 million of it and increased the capacity at the transfer station and increased the effectiveness and the efficiency, which there's some pretty basic things that could be done, which are still repeatedly ignored, which would speed up the line and speed up the process there, you'd have less illegal dumping. So this $15 million is essentially a Band-Aid, which is not going to last that long, but you actually have the opportunity to just take that $15 million and deal with the root cause of these issues and further do that. So if you took $25 million and gave it to DPW for infrastructure to fix some of these issues, that would make a lot of sense. I still don't understand how this $15 million is going to have an impact past, you know, a year from now or how it's, if anything, I feel like once, once these haulers see that these illegal dumping sites are cleaned up as quickly as I would hope they'd be cleaned up for a million dollars, that it might invite more dumping there because they, oh, we can just go and drop it over there because there's a crew that's going to come clean it up. So I still, I still can't wrap my head around, around this expenditure and how that's the best use of funds and how that's actually going to have an impact beyond the length of time that the program is going to last for.
Definitely appreciate that. I'll say the ARPA investment in the Clean Core does not change the need for the city to deal with illegal dumping in a more proactive way. We are working, for example, with Councilman Burnett to pilot an illegal dumping program where we're working with multiple agencies to do so, and that my hope, my hope is that that'll launch in September. The point that I'm making is that while you are absolutely right, there's a need for us to invest in our transfer station and that investment, these investments are absolutely going to happen, there's also a need for us to do more around illegal dumping, and that work is going to happen. It doesn't change the fact that we do need to empower our communities to do more work to assist DPW and to assist their communities in getting cleaner. And the investment, I think, is a strategic one. It's twofold, as mentioned a few minutes ago, where we are not only just cleaning communities, but we're also training our residents. And so it is, it is a wise investment, one that I am proud of. I think it answers a number of calls that we have been receiving, and it is not just one year, but multiple years, and hopefully we receive fruit, if you will, from the labor, and that is to say cleaner communities, but also residents who are ready to work in for DPW. You and I have both sit in this room. We have talked about the recruitment challenges at DPW. We've talked about the need to train more residents to take on these jobs. This program does just that. So ultimately, we are being strategic. We're thinking long-term. We're thinking about the best opportunities for our residents who might be interested in employment with our city. This program does all that.
Look, I'm going to respectfully disagree. I don't think this program does that. And one last thing that I'll say on this, like, we have certain programs in the city that are very effective, like the Environmental Control Board has programs where they provide supplies to communities for community cleanups. That, I would say, is an excellent return on investment. We provide bags, gloves, grabbers to communities, and they fan out and have 50 to 100 people. I do multiple cleanups a year where we have at least 100 people at each, and so hundreds of man-hours and woman-hours, free, free community folks out there doing it, and they're just happy that the city provided them the gloves, the bags, et cetera. We can enhance programs like that even to today. Like, I have communities that want dumpsters for community cleanups, and we're told there's capacity issues at putting a dumpster, you know, on a street for the day that they want a dumpster put on a street for a community cleanup. So it really is, and I'm going to leave it at this and turn it back over to the chair, but it's mind-boggling to me, an investment, I wouldn't, I really don't even call it an investment because I don't see that it's going to provide any return, that when we have programs that need help and a little bit of boost, a little bit of extra help in those things, provide us an astronomical return on investment. You put a dumpster on a street for a community cleanup, the community fills up that dumpster, all you got to do is haul it away. That, that is a great return on investment. Adding additional supplies is a great investment. A million dollars, 15 communities, I don't see that there's going to be an impact to do that. And even within the neighborhoods, I don't see how, you know, how that, you know, taking, taking 15 out of a few hundred neighborhoods in the city is going to actually change the trajectory, and the city is getting dirtier, especially with the recycling not getting picked up. I found somebody's bills on my front lawn this week that got blown out because recycling got picked up late, and so the wind blew it and all their bills were all over my front lawn. Like, that creates a lot of, you know, issues. And so the neighborhoods that, you know, are, that are a lot dirtier because recycling's not getting picked up, aren't going to get any cleaner because of this program.
Well, Councilman, I agree with you. The program that you've referenced, where we are providing supplies to the community, is absolutely an effective program. It's one that is very popular, and we, we appreciate community, we appreciate residents who actively volunteer. Again, it is not an either-or proposition here. We can support that program and support communities with heavier duty equipment, with heavier duty material to pick up harder-to-reach and bulkier items. This, we do not expect community to pick up because we provide them with supplies and material. I'd also say, to your point around recycling, what was described to you and has been described to your colleagues is a recruitment challenge. We cannot throw money at the issue around recycling. We have, we do not have enough people who are interested in the jobs that will ultimately get us to a place where we can fully fill the routes that are needed for recycling. This program will be one of the elements that potentially gets us there, where we are training men and women in our city for jobs, cleaning communities, that could hopefully provide them with an opportunity and a roadmap for a permanent job in our city. And this, again, I believe, puts us in a position where we can fully staff some of the routes that we can, cannot currently staff, even with higher salaries and more opportunities. So appreciate, again, your comments, and we'll certainly take those back to DPW.
Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, C.A.O., I want to thank you because, you know, my big mouth talked about our wrecking parks. We have good employees there because we were losing them because of salaries, and I looked at the board estimates agenda, and I see we are raising some salaries with our wrecking park employees. Also, I want to be working with Bob and Director Moore because we don't have enough funding for programming our rec centers. Because you always hear people say we don't have no rec centers. We have rec centers, but it's not funding in their fault because the funding with wrecking parks is always salaries and benefits. I'm glad to see that the salaries are being raised at wrecking parks to keep our best employees. My question is, I work with a group called Division Street Landscaping, and this gentleman who hires returning citizens, and I kind of get disturbed when we keep thinking our young people are just worth cleaning up alleys. I don't even like the term. I think if you put them in landscaping, like we on, this Saturday, we was up on Green Mountain 20th Street, they cut the grass, they planted flowers. My question is, like Broadway East, they have some contracts to cut grass, but they only get grant money. $5,000 here, $5,000 there. Other organizations get $200, $300,000 to cut grass. So when we talk about spending a million dollar in neighborhoods, I would like for y'all to go back and look at, how do we now give these organizations like Broadway East, Division Street Landscape, more money so they can hire more returning citizens and teach our young people about landscaping, not going in an alley and clean up an alley? Our young kids are worth more than that kind of, what they say is, clean up the alley. I just don't like the term that we use our young people. And a guy, Alex Smith, who has that Division Street Landscaping, he is teaching them how to plant flowers, how to cut grass, but cut it in a professional way. If you see some of these football fields, guys make a lot of money cutting grass. So we're doing something different at East Baltimore, but we need to fund and not the little $5,000 grant from housing to organizations like Broadway East. I can tell you, one piece of property, there's three organizations cutting the same property. Three. Why is it two contractors and Broadway East cutting the same lot? Don't make sense. We need to go back and revisit that, and because we have the experience of Alex Smith, Division Street Landscaping, and we hire young people and returning citizens, I think if you're going to talk about giving money, give them more than $5,000 for grant money. It don't make sense. That's how we hire more of our young people. Keep hollering this stuff about squeegee kids. They would love to do that, and I don't like the word squeegee kids because they're intersection entrepreneurs. I don't like that word, but we can grab those young people, and some of them actually were not working. They're now working for Division Street Landscaping, and they learn how to landscape, not clean an alley. People need to be responsible for their own property. They need to stop dumping in the alley. You can raise all the fines you want. If we don't educate people about being responsible, whether they rent their property or own it, we just going to keep chasing trash, keep chasing bulk, and wasting money there. Let's use that money and teach our young people about landscaping, and eventually create their own business, buy their own equipment, and then they can be on the city buy list and cut grass themselves. So I just want to share that and make sure we kind of have a, some more conversation about how we distribute that money and more money to these community associations, not the same old groups who get the same old money. They doing the same thing that Broadway East doing, but Broadway East get $5,000, they get $200,000, $300,000. We got to stop that. Thank you.
Council Vice President Middleton?
Did you have anything? Or you're good?
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess before I get in my question, I do want to comment, add to the comment of my last two colleagues. As far as the Northwest Transfer Station, I definitely agree with my colleague of the 5th District. It has historically been a problem forever, and it's near, and it's also near railroad track. The safety is just terrible, and every single day, it is like this. It's, it's something that really needs to be, be looked at. We need to listen to our small haulers. We have new, new dumping sites now. Here we have one of the seven jewels of the city, the Silver and Arboreum, and that street in between, that's right next to the arboreum, it's constant dump. That has never happened before, never. So it's a new site, and new sites are developing around that whole Parkites area, so it needs to be looked at immediately. The problems have increased, especially over COVID, and we just can't sit idle and think that pilot programs, it's just belaboring what the real issues are. We need to try to investigate and go back to some of the changes that has happened in the last four or five years that have failed and get back to what was successful with dumping and especially at our transfer stations. For me, it's, for all of us, it's all about what our residents see. We have residents that live and own homes near these places as well and have to deal with this stuff on a daily basis. So it should become a priority. On page 14, where it talks about improving Baltimore's recreation infrastructure, I really think, you know, we're going through a climate change here in the country and, and in our city, and we need to really include forestry in some of this stuff. You know, it's a part of recreation and parks. Our city has loads of parks that are also near recreation facilities. We have reforestation areas, we have trails. We constantly complain about the grass cutting that I don't want to belabor because you can see that we are, again, out of control with the grass. But money needs to go to forestry to catch up on fallen trees. Money needs to go to transportation, on repairing our decaying streets in our neighborhoods that help our tax-paying citizens that get out of their cars when they leave their homes and have to travel down bumpy streets every single morning. That's a priority. We need to put, focus some of those things on, those are simple things that need to become a priority. On that note, I need to also know how you decided to, I know you had mentioned that the U.S. Treasury Department does not factor in commitments and obligations. Could you kind of explain the difference between a commitment and an obligation as far as how you disseminated money? And added to that, this whole pot of money, we got two separate pots of money, an added pot of money because we're a municipality, extra ARPA money, that some of these, all of these cities really that you are, that are in this comparison, did not really get. And I just think that we have an edge with that money to help some of the things that are belaboring the city that we, you know, we own everything, we are our own municipality. So all of these, you have to consider that as you're making decisions that these other cities don't have an extra edge in. So I like your comments on everything I just mentioned.
Certainly. So first, I want to address, I'm not certain what you meant by two separate pots of money. There were two deposits, if you will, that equaled $641 million, and that is the total pot of money that Baltimore City received. That is separate and apart from any state funding, anything that our public school system receives. So all of my reporting is focused on the 641, so I wasn't sure what you were referencing when you said two pots unless you meant the kind of two deposits that equal the 641 million.
Correct.
Okay. And then also, just going back to slide two, to talk about the differences between commitment, obligation, and expenditure. So commitment, again, is really our internal use, term that we use when we talk about the total amount of funding in a particular topic area. So most of our public announcements have talked, have been talked about in terms of commitments, meaning $100 million in housing, $41 million in recreation and parks. For the United States Treasury, they don't necessarily recognize what we are considering a commitment. That is our total investment in a particular topic area. Treasury only cares about obligations. Treasury only cares about obligations, obligations and expenditures. So what that means is again, as an example, our one hundred million dollar commitment for housing, there's a certain amount of money that we obligate every year, which makes it accessible to an agency to be able to spend. So for ease of math, we'll just say twenty-five million over four fiscal years to equal that one hundred million. So when we report to Treasury, we're reporting in the money that we obligated. So the twenty-five million for FY twenty-two, twenty-five million for FY twenty-three, that is how we report to Treasury. And then against that obligation, we report how much money we've spent. So of that, again, as a simple example, twenty-five million for FY twenty-two, let's say that we spent twenty-one million. We have to report that to Treasury and let them know that of the amount that we said that we were going to spend in FY twenty-two, this is how much we actually spent and this is what we spent it on. Um, that's a, a very generic example, but I, I hope that that clears up the difference between commitment, obligation and expenditure, but if not, please let me know.
Okay. Um, could someone comment on my first comment about, um, forestry and transportation and how, you know, I'm feeling like all this stuff is left out.
Well, in terms of the roads and transportation issues, Madam Vice President, uh, you are absolutely right in terms of aging infrastructure. The limited American Rescue Plan dollars, we had to be strategic about, uh, making sure that we use, uh, these funds. We use these funds in the best and most, um, um, effective way. And that is to say, we, we know that, uh, as a city and as a state, we are going to get some investments, significant investments to help to improve our infrastructure. That is to say our water and sewer infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, uh, and that is coming by way of the Infrastructure Investment Act. Uh, those funds are beginning to roll out now. The idea that we would invest American Rescue Plan dollars while six hundred and forty-one million sounds like a large number, uh, it is not when it comes to infrastructure. We can spend considerable funds to improve a, a road or a water infrastructure and that would eat up to a large extent, a big portion of the American Rescue Plan, the very limited American Rescue Plan dollars we have. And so for that reason, we are now working extremely hard to make sure that we are competitive uh, when it comes to investments in our infrastructure, that we are, we are applying to the federal award, applying for federal awards, uh, that will help, uh, to bring money to Baltimore City to improve our infrastructure. So, uh, DOT is working really hard. Matt Garbark has just been named recently in the last month as, uh, Director of our infrastructure, new infrastructure office. The intent of that office is to make sure we are competing, uh, for infrastructure dollars. So, uh, your, your question is well taken, it is well timed, completely agree, and we are going to be competitive as a city to pull down as much in the way of infrastructure dollars as we can from the federal government and, uh, and from the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, following up on one of my colleagues', um, thoughts, the ten million for, so there's the fifteen, fourteen point seven million for DPW for the Clean Core and an additional ten million that'll be announced at some point, or maybe I missed it, um, for capital, that's on top of the capital dollars in the capital budget. Right. Um, so that's going to be, if I remember the capital budget correctly, because I didn't look it up, another, in a total ten, close to twenty million for infrastructure improvements for DPW. Are we, is part of that also going to a new east side transfer station? Because some of the clog that's happening in Northwest and at, um, the landfill is that we, and the, and the illegal dumping that's happening in East Baltimore is because we don't have an East Baltimore transfer station. And in the capital budget, it does allocate a, I think only a million, I think for a, um, a, an east side transfer station. Can you tell us where those ten million dollars in ARPA money is going in terms of the, um, capital costs?
Uh, the ten million won't be going to a new transfer station and I want to leave it maybe as a follow-up to allow DPW to talk more strategically about, um, transfer station placement. Uh, I know that there's been a lot of discussion and even some discussion at the state level about, uh, positioning of transfer stations. And so, um, uh, wanna, wanna have DPW follow-up more strategically about how they're thinking, uh, about routes, route optimization and the placement of transfer stations around the city. Uh, in terms of the ten million, we really are talking about current facility improvements and, uh, and making sure that, uh, that our workforce benefits from, um, in that by way of better working conditions benefits from the ARPA funds as well.
Um, I will say that I do have a constituent who, I mean, I think I wrote to you and DPW about this. Um, you know, because of, we have, uh, shortfalls in our workforce, but also because of the problems that we're having at Northwest and at the landfill, some of our workers are actually spending a ridiculous amount of time and are forced to take overtime in order to clean, to finish their routes, which doesn't help them, you know, they don't have a normal workday and so, you know, their family obligations are out the window and they don't want to work. And so it's a, it, it actually folds into the workforce issue that we're having. So, um, I think we need to, to really have a bigger conversation around, you know, working conditions, forced overtime because, I mean, we, we definitely need our recycling and our trash picked up and I'm glad that, that folks are doing it, but they're spending a lot of time waiting around for the transfer station to be open for them to dump their load. And that's not fair to our workers and that's why, I mean, word is spreading that people don't want to work here as a result of that and many other factors. Um, so I think it's, it's a huge issue from a, um, you know, workforce perspective as well and not just illegal dumping. Um, so just to, to put that as a follow-up. And then my second question is unrelated. Um, I am, uh, looking at, uh, page seventeen on the obligations and expenditures, um, for this quarter. Um, and the commitment for housing was, uh, announced in March, but I don't see any spending so far in that. Can you explain where we are on how we're, uh, the, you know, we've, we've got money out there that we want to put into our projects and so I'm wondering where all that is.
So we've been working with DHCD and DHCD has been working with their developers to fine tune their budgets. Uh, we talked a little bit about this in the last hearing that obviously with the escalation in costs, that budgets are being revised in order to factor in those costs. And so that is taking some time for those developers to get those budgets together to provide to DHCD who can then share with us that we can formulate the fiscal year budgets for those projects. So that's been the challenge thus far.
Yeah, but that's only part of the allocation, right? Uh, of the, you know, the projects like, um, Uplands Chum and, um, O'Donnell Heights and Park Heights. There's significant amount of money, there's fifteen million for, um, the impact investment areas. There's, um, you know, additional obligations and so I would have thought that some of that would already be starting to go out the door.
So there are a couple of things that we are, um, that will be on the BOE agenda coming up with those that will allow us to be able to start to release that money. So those things are upcoming in the next.
So we should see it in the next quarterly report is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that.
At least the obligation, maybe not spend, but certainly the obligation.
Right. Right. Understood. Understood. Um, thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a couple more, but I'll, I'll wait till the next round. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
Cao Shorter, you briefly mentioned, um, the water storage and broadband infrastructure and it was mentioned in the twenty-two, um, Recovery Plan Performance Report. So, um, we noted the Office of the New Infrastructure ZAR is going to be tasked with supporting agencies regarding federal infrastructure projects and grant programs. Do we have any idea how much money may be allocated to Baltimore City, um, what we're going to be receiving from the Infrastructure Act yet?
Appreciate that question. Not at this time. A lot of, uh, if, a lot of information is still flowing from, uh, the federal government around the Infrastructure Act. I think we are certainly out ahead of most, uh, most other similarly situated cities in that we now have, uh, we are, we have started an office and are building staff within that office. We do not have a sense, uh, now of how much will be allocated. Um, uh, and I'll, just for the public's benefit, I'll say that part of the Infrastructure Investment Act, uh, will allocate funds to cities like Baltimore. A much larger fund, uh, or, or pool of resources are going to be competitive where the city and our agencies are expected to apply, um, for federal awards where a grant application would come out from a federal agency and we would apply. I am, what I do know and what we do know as a city is that a good majority of the resources associated with the, um, Infrastructure Act will be competitive. And so we are establishing and setting up our, uh, our local infrastructure to make sure that we are competitive. Uh, but at this point, we do not have a sense of allocation amounts, uh, assigned to respective cities, um, but as soon as we do, uh, we certainly will. I imagine also that the state will have a role to play there because the state will also receive an allocation and then will be allocating to city, to jurisdictions within the state. Uh, so a lot to still be discovered, uh, in terms of what's going to happen around infrastructure.
I'm going to hold the comment, this on my mind. Um, have we broken down how we're going to leverage the, um, leverage the funds to better understand like how much ARPA spending should be allocated to bolster efforts to remedy issues, say at our waste water treatment facilities? Are we thinking, um, ahead of the curve? And I say that in a way that sometimes I feel like, um, I don't feel like the, the city is not moving with a level of urgency that I think that we should for our residents. I think sometimes we're lacking a lot of creative, um, creativity options like Council Ms. Stokes was talking about, hey, Clean Core, but you guys didn't get a chance to explain it. Um, so I don't know if it's going to include, um, landscaping as well as, um, cleaning up, um, alleys. I don't know if it's going to include engagement for folks who don't understand how to properly recycle or to properly actually dispose of waste, um, within our community, communities. So, um, how are we strategically thinking or how is that new office strategically thinking about how we're going to leverage these funds? The first thing I said was for our waste water treatment facilities, but about other projects as well? Like how far ahead of the curve are we now since we made that announcement a couple months ago, um, about the Office of the Infrastructure ZAR?
Um, well, yeah, so in terms of waste water treatment and the infrastructure investments associated with waste water, uh, there is a capital program already underway that DPW, uh, I'm sure will be happy to provide to, uh, you and your colleagues, uh, after, after this hearing that lays out investments that we make every year in our water infrastructure and that doesn't stop. That said, uh, in terms of the landscaping work that will ultimately be done and continues to be done, you know, through our agencies, during the off-season, a lot of work was done to make sure that our contracts were in alignment. Last year at the start of the summer, you, you all may remember that we had contracts that were not in place, uh, some contracts that were in place did not have appropriate performance measures associated with them. Uh, that is not the case anymore. And so we now have several contractors that are working with us. As you know, several agencies are, uh, are responsible for different components of grounds maintenance throughout the city and we absolutely, um, are leveraging, uh, those vendors to make sure that the, uh, jobs associated with that work, uh, that those jobs are used as training ground, um, for future, hopefully future employees of the city. Uh, at this point, the Clean Core Program really is about cleaning and greening our city, uh, and making, and not necessarily grounds maintenance. We have contracts and we spend a lot of money through our agencies with those vendors and do not plan to use the scope associated with Clean Core to interrupt the scope associated with those various contracts. So we see this work as two separate bodies of work, um, and can certainly push to make sure that our contracts include training, uh, for grounds ma, um, appropriate training for, for beautification and grounds maintenance. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, you know what, Cao Shorter, my question was all over the place, so I feel like that's why you're like kinda all over the place with your answer right now. Um, no shade at all. Um, so what have you guys done so far within that, um, within the office, within the Infrastructure ZAR? What, what strategy? How are you guys on the front end about leveraging these dollars that are going to come in from the Infrastructure Act? How are you preparing? I feel like you briefly touched upon it, but how are we preparing since we have this time before this money is going to be allocated to our city? What are we saying already? This is where the funds need to go.
I appreciate that clarity. So three, three, um, divisions of that office, if you will, are three primary aims of that office. One is to make sure that we are, um, hiring and preparing grant writers, um, so that when grants, awards come, we are prepared to, to write grant responses and make those responses competitive to assist agencies in the grant application process. Another aim of that office in, in addition to grant writing is BOE and procurement and making sure that co, construction contracts that come, that are awarded to, uh, I'm sorry, uh, federal awards that come to the city for construction, that those construction projects make it through our BOE and procurement process expeditiously. Um, and, 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 um, and they will be providing assistance and support to agencies around the procurement and BOE process. Uh, the third aim is to make sure that we are managing construction projects, uh, properly. Uh, and that is making sure that the construction projects themselves are being, uh, managed with, um, with an eye towards being on time and on budget. Uh, so very important components of, again, preparing, as you said, Councilwoman, uh, for an influx of infrastructure dollars. Grant writing, procurement, uh, and ultimately project management.
Have you been thinking about staff to oversee these construction sites? Is there going to be someone else within, um, I know they have a new name, but basically the Office of, um, Civil Rights, if that's not the correct, um, agency? Are we going to have extra people there to make sure that we're taking care of people, we're doing the right jobs on these construction sites, knowing that a lot of this infrastructure, a lot of these infrastructure dollars are going to be there? Have we thought about that?
Uh, yes.
Within that project man, project management scope?
Yes. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights, um, has some responsibility of making sure that they are monitoring construction sites, particularly to ensure that, um, fair wages, uh, and other fair, um, um, fair employment is being administered at those sites. Uh, yes. Uh, you, you may remember in the budget associated with the Office of, uh, Civil Rights and Equity, there were some additional pins associated, awarded in FY twenty-three for, for, for that work. Uh, and so that is not to say they have enough. Uh, as, as these projects come into the city or as the funds come into the city and additional projects start, we will have capacity issues on our contractor's side, meaning having enough construction vendors in our city to actually get the work done. We will have capacity issues inside of our government in terms of procurement personnel, finance personnel and others to make sure we are getting those projects through our administrative processes and we will certainly have capacity issues on the monitoring side. And so, yes, we absolutely have been having those conversations, uh, with, uh, with Chief Moore.
Okay. We, we just want to, as a council, we want to make sure that they have the correct staff and so when these complaints come in or when these concerns come in, that someone can get to those sites and do what we're supposed to do as a city to make sure that we're protecting workers on those sites. Um, my last question, um, vice chair, um, my last question's going to be, we noted, um, in July, the administration restructured the broadband and digital equity office, it moved to B sit. Um, this can be a quick question. How is this move going to impact the current ARPA investment framework that was allocated to that department?
How will it?
Is it going to have any impact on the ARPA dollars that the broadband and digital equity office was moved to B sit?
No, it, it will not have any impact on the, the allocation. Uh, we are moving, uh, with haste to make sure that we're doing the, uh, the part and. We are moving with haste to make sure that we're doing the, the part, the partnering with housing and with recreation centers, I believe are up first in terms of infrastructure around broadband and digital equity. And we are, we are moving just as quickly to make sure that those partnerships and the work that needs to be done there move, move quickly. I also want to, if there's more to be said around broadband and digital equity, I want to open it up to the, to the Director. No?
I, I concur with what CEO Shorter said. We've been having conversations with B sit and sharing pertinent information to make sure that we are on track with our ARPA allocation and making sure that we spend within the timeline. So we're in close collaboration.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. I'm done.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One is, we talked about forestry and I know they got additional funding. I had been talking to forestry this week. I just had a constituent call me and we looking at, I'm just looking at that Broadway medium strip going from Shea Street and Broadway to North Avenue. Them trees have never been trimmed. The young landscape partners want to plant flowers. Forestry has, right now, a backup of six months to trim trees. If we giving them funding or extra funding, why are we not making sure that, I mean, it's unbelievable that six months they behind on, on trimming trees? How do we give them money and not hold them accountable in terms of, again, I just had a constituent ask about trees and I said they six months behind and they text was, wow. So we giving money, more money to them. We also want to mention that we talked about, they do a lot of cutting down the trees. Are we now going to get additional equipment to remove stumps? We got stumps all over the city. Cut a tree down, you can't even put another one back because we don't have the equipment to even remove the stumps that we already had cut the trees down. So my question is, we talk about landscaping, I'm going to go back and say it, the money is not in landscaping, but how do we keep, and I keep saying, this city is 60% black. There are, you talking about giving more contractors to people in the city with ARPA money and your procurement system is horrible. I know businesses now don't even want to do business with the city no more. I had to call Mr. Raymond, Henry Raymond, to get them paid. I just talked to a gentleman yesterday. You going back to get some more contracts? No. It almost have put them out of business. So if we talking about getting more contractors, we need to look at the procurement system in this city because people going to be out of business, especially small black business in this city. So we giving out all this money, but we not looking at how we streamline the procurement in the city. So my question to you, Director, CEO, are we looking at procurement and changing it here in the city? Because it's really hurting small businesses here in the city.
Appreciate that question very much. I 100% agree with you. We have significant work to do around procurement and our invoice processing within this city. Ultimately, we are absolutely doing, doing work long-term to, to improve our procurement system writ large. We announced last year a top to bottom review. That review is being conducted. Many of our agencies at this point have, have already been interviewed by the third party that's conducting that assessment and that will ultimately be making the recommendations of the full-scale, the, the full-scale sort of reimagining, if you will, of our procurement system. I will also say that yesterday we implemented Workday. Workday launched yesterday quietly. There, that also will prove to be a pretty significant night and day turn for us. It gives us the ability to automate programs and systems that have, to date have not been. I will also say in addition to the longer-term procurement work that's being done, there are also, we are making some arrangements to provide for some additional supplemental support for our procurement staff around the city today. And so that is to say, short-term, right now, capacity to help our procurement bureau and to help procurement staff around the city with the procurement actions that, that we are clearly not 100% on. I 100% agree with you that we have significant work to do around procurement.
So do, do you have written or do you have something in place that's short-term? And no disrespect, I've been hearing about this, about procurement for the longest time. They keep saying we working on it, we working on it, but I still get business people that cannot get paid and don't even want to even do business with the city anymore. So to keep saying that we working on it, what are we working on? Because when they keep calling me, evidently nothing has changed short-term. My second question is, what are we doing about HR? I know guys that want to work. People in this city want to work and HR is, is very difficult trying to navigate that. And we talk about, we have a shortage of employees. We need to look at procurement, how that's working, how it's not working, and HR, how that's not working either. Because a lot of times we don't have enough people working in the city because HR in this city can be horrible in terms of getting people lined so they can work. It's the same old statements about, we working on this, we working on that, we going to change this, but then using business people again, can't get paid. We talking about recruitment. We got people shortage in DBW, DOT, all the agencies. Because we need to go back and see how HR is doing what they're doing.
To be clear.
Because it's, it's, it's not working the way, the way it's set right now. HR is making this city being, not being able to hire people who want to work. There's a problem there and we need to address that also.
In terms of short-term around procurement, I think I may have mentioned in this room to this committee, last year, March, when we began to deal with and work on prompt payment issues, we had outstanding invoices, and that is to say invoices of 30, that were 30 days past due of 22.5 million. We have been conducting bi-weekly and monthly meetings with a cross-section of agencies since that time. And thanks to their leadership, really the leadership of many of the men and women in our city that do the work of processing invoices, not to say that that is 100% and not to say that we aren't making strategic system-wide improvements, that number is now down to 5.5 million. A, a really shift in the way that we are, are, are conducting business. It is not to say that, 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 again, the system improvements have been made. They have not, and that's what I referenced a few minutes ago. But I do not want to give the impression that the men and women that are doing this work every day aren't actually, you know, making leaps forward in terms of the number of outstanding invoices that are, that are past due. That number has, is a fraction of what it was last year, to be clear.
Well, I'm just, no disrespect, but we can give out all the ARPA money we want. If we, our procurement and our HR don't get it right, we going to not have employees working in this city and we are not going to have people that want to do business in this city, period. So we can talk about short-term stuff, but those two agencies, we got to get that right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Middleton.
I concur with my colleague of the 12th District on that subject. And just in particular, I went back in time as a past director of the State's Apprenticeship System and Baltimore City, they, lots of things would come to my office and the main thing that would always happen with Baltimore City is that we would always have to be resolving cases where employees would not get paid. And the word was out for contractors, go to Baltimore City because you're not going to be checked, not going to be monitored. And paperwork would come to my office with people that have not gotten paychecks in two to three months. And we're talking about blacks and minorities that on contracted jobs. And I'm hoping that this is a time where we can really change that. Dana Moore of the Office of Equity has been doing a great job and I know that this city needs employees to do that monitoring on sites. It's imperative that we hire people that go out and check these sites on a regular basis because it's a lot of stuff, illegal things that are happening out there that should not be happening. And we need to take, work on getting that reputation taken away. My last question, looking at all of this, I, and as you know, also as a council, my colleague of the 1st District and I have put in a bill creating an office for older adults that was basically supported by the entire council. And we are taking that very serious. Back in 2009 is when the office was moved under the Health Department and we continue to say over and over again, we appreciate everything that the Health Department does and has continued to do to, to help our older adults in this city, but it's not working. It's not working this way and we need to create a separate office. It's imperative. These are things that we are hearing from our constituents around this entire city, from our centers, our centers around the city, our apartment buildings, our, it's time we include them in this process and try, and get an office created. Similar, we got the Office of Family and Children's Success. We need a separate office. We have a very high older adult population in this city and the issue has to be addressed. What's hap, what's working? I've been a commissioner on the Commission of Aging since I've been a council person and thing, work is not moving fast enough. They're not getting the help they need. And we are doing things as council members that we should not be doing. We need to be protecting and helping our older adults 60 and over. Some of the things that we've had, already have had sample situations that show that. 60-year-old, 60-year-old person walking down the street and being killed. It, it start, the numbers are starting to increase with our older adults. That's just one example. So we need to be giving money specifically for that and we're going to be working hard. We've already have our plan land, laid out, so I'm giving you full notice and warning that we are taking this very serious and I hope that your administration is going to listen to us and help to make this happen.
We will absolutely always listen and always work in partnership. There will be financial implications to pulling the aging program out of health. As I'm sure the Health Department has talked about, there are specific federal awards, specific federal, federal funding that is assigned to health for our aging, for our senior population. That agency standalone means that we're no longer eligible for that funding. So there will certainly be financial implications. Deputy Mayor Leach and other leaders, including the Health Commissioner, pulled together a citywide cabinet on aging to, for the exact purpose of making sure that we were responsive to community needs, responsive to residents' needs, responsive to our senior, seniors' needs, and also making sure that we were responsive to the commission. We can do this work and we can do this work under the current structure, is what I'll say. Ultimately, the administration will partner and work with you, Madam Vice President, as we always have. But I will say I am, as an administrator, concerned about what this will mean in terms of our ability to actually leverage the federal funds that are set aside for our seniors if we have a standalone agency.
We have to look at the models that are surrounding us. Every city on this list has a, basically has a separate office of aging. Why is Baltimore, for some reason, have a problem with moving and creating an apartment? There's federal money in every single agency. You have to sit, we, yes, we have to sit down and work together and
Absolutely.
And have discussions. We're going to have a hearing about it. We're going to have advocates. We're going, it's, it's mainly a time to work together. So I'm putting that message out there. Our older adults are in dire need and we have to do what we can for their wishes. We are the vessels and the voices of what they want. And this is what I know the older adults in this city want. And I think we have to try to figure out a way to get their, to get what they want.
Look forward to the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Kearney, can you help me a little bit here with, I'm just curious about the definitions that the federal government is using on revenue replacement? Because I see, you know, you had mentioned that our peer cities are spending, you know, at the moment, what they have spent, because some of them are not, have not spent their allocation yet. But at the moment, as of April, they've spent a lot of their money on revenue replacement. And you had said that, if I'm, if I'm correct, I heard you say that that is salaries and lost revenue. Was that, is that in cities where they, you know, there was an economic impact like, you know, we, we had like the hotel tax, right? We lost revenue from the hotel tax because we couldn't, obviously nobody was traveling. You know, can you tell me a little bit more about what that is?
Sure. So just to be clear, the United States Treasury asks for every city and jurisdiction to calculate their revenue losses for a certain year. So you have a base year and then any subsequent fiscal year after that. The amount that you determine in losses, you can do one of two things. You can claim the entire amount in losses that you have or you can claim a, a minimum of $10 million. Some cities have chosen to do that, others have chosen to claim all of their funding that they've lost. So there is a calculation that the Treasury Department has shared with all cities and jurisdictions for us to be able to make that calculation. Based on what your revenue losses are, you may use those funds for what they'll call a provision of government services or for budget stabilization purposes. Some cities have used it for budget stabilization, so they are holding it to the side, just as we have the 80 million dollars that we have to the side for budget stabilization because of unknown economic factors and, and we don't know what the impact might be on us. So we have that money set aside. And then there are other dollars that can be used for salaries and for personnel costs. And so some cities have chosen to do that.
So that, I do remember us talking about the 80 million set aside. That was important for us, just because we're just not sure what's going to happen in the next, you know, year or so. But that's not included in, in revenue replacement on our chart. Is that correct? Is that separate on this chart?
So when we talk about commitments, it is all of our projects and also revenue replacement, or the 80 million dollars set aside, if you will. But what, what we were also trying to show in subsequent slides is that even aside from the revenue replacement amount that we have, that we have invested far more funding in some of the projects and services that address negative economic impacts. So when we're talking about spending, if there are cities that have not spent money in programs and services as we had, the spend rate looks to be larger than what we've spent because it's largely focused on revenue replacement.
No, I understand what you were trying to do. I just, and I, and I under, I get it. And I, I was just curious about what
Yes.
This is, so I do appreciate that. The, the, the follow-up is when we're talking about, so it's a specific formula that the federal government gave us. So it's not like we can say, for instance, the, the revenue that we have lost from COVID and even maybe even in the past, or the obligations that we had that we just didn't have money for, like the, just say in my district, the Tavoli Project, right? That wouldn't, that That wouldn't fall under revenue replacement because there were, you know, we didn't have really revenue for it, right?
That's correct.
So even though that it is backfilling a project that we had been trying to find money for, correct?
That's correct.
So that's not in that calculation?
That's correct.
Okay. And so what category does that fall into? Negative economic impacts, probably?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I just needed a little bit more clarity about that. My second question has to do with the infrastructure money. I'm glad that we are going to go full force and try to get as much as we need and can. How are our priorities for how we're going to go forward to apply for that money going to be established? So for instance, the flood area in my district is going to cost probably about $20 million to $30 million to fix. The DPW has done an amazing job of design. Once the community in a meeting coming up this week picks which solution, you know, they can move forward on design, and that project is going to be pretty shovel-ready. So what, that's just an example. You know, Vice President talked about our roads. There's the traffic calming that all of us are concerned about. How are we going to be putting together our priorities for what money we're going to be going after? Is it just based on the infrastructure office at the federal level says, okay, now we've got money for roads, go ahead and apply. Now we've got money for floods, you go and apply. Is it going to be more reactive? Or is it going to be sort of, here's what we're going to go for, and then we're going to, you know, advocate to the federal government how we want to do? How is that dynamic going to work, and how are council members going to be a part of the process?
Sure. As far as we can tell, there is not going to be a central federal infrastructure office. Individual federal agencies will be administering federal awards that will be categorized or categorized as Infrastructure Investment Act awards. So funding was approved, and ultimately, as federal agencies receive that funding, they will announce awards, and as a local jurisdiction, will be eligible to apply for those awards. And so to some extent, it will be reactive and will ultimately be based on when the federal agency decides to announce the federal award. I'd also add that our agencies, Transportation, for example, Public Works, for example, absolutely have priorities that they will be looking to meet in terms of infrastructure. But ultimately, when the federal award is announced, we just need to be in the best position possible to be competitive and to write the very best grant applications that we can to make sure that our need is very well articulated and that we receive the appropriate amount of award.
Do we need resolutions from this council as a way to support some of those? I mean, you'll reach out to us when those are needed, if they are needed, letters from us, you know, we want to be involved in this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other related question to that was around leverage. Do we need to have matching dollars in some cases? How does that work, and did we already put some of that in the budget?
There may be. Again, there's a lot that we do not know about the Infrastructure Investment Act in terms of matching. I know that local jurisdictions have certainly made their voices known to the federal government and to the President's office directly, what this means for local jurisdictions and the challenges associated with matching funds, especially with infrastructure, given the amount of funding we're talking about. But oftentimes, these federal awards come with some sort of matching requirement. And so unless the model changes, we are likely going to face some need for match. Agencies, especially, for example, the Department of Transportation, are used to dealing with the federal government, certainly used to pulling down federal awards, and used to the matching requirement associated with those federal awards. And so we will have to deal with, again, reactively deal with the awards as they come and apply for those that meet our needs.
Right. Well, the match for DOT, as you said, they are used to it. Now we have more highway user revenue coming in next year, so hopefully that'll help to leverage some of that. I guess, would DPW be able to use, and maybe this is a conversation for a different hearing, but would DPW be able to use enterprise funds as a match? Or, you know, because we don't have any sort of new funding for the DPW to use for the, for instance, the flood area or, you know, other infrastructure that they're going to need, particularly, you know, as my colleague was talking about, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, et cetera.
Yeah, for water and wastewater, yes. Those funds are eligible for match, and it'll ultimately be up to DPW what funds they put forward, and we will certainly work with our budget team and finance to make sure that where possible, we are identifying appropriate funds to match where it's necessary. Again, I'll say it again, my hope is that the federal government hears our complaint as a local jurisdiction, that we are oftentimes not in a position to match federal funds at this level, and that the whole rationale for investments in infrastructure at this level is because local jurisdictions can't fund it themselves. And so for that reason, we'll have to be very creative if the model that we've seen from the federal government in terms of these awards exists for the Infrastructure Act.
And what is going to be the transparency around this process? Will we, will there be a website that'll have from the infrastructure office, you know, notices from the federal government that, you know, are out there and that the office is going to apply for? The reason I ask is that, you know, reading the federal record, as you know, it's challenging. The federal record is really terrible. You need a magnifying glass on top of your reading glasses in order to read it, and it's very confusing. So I would imagine that the infrastructure office, one of their roles is to try to at least be transparent about what's out there. Because if I can see, oh, there's some money that's, you know, available for my flood area, I can go to, you know, DPW and say, hey, did you see this? You know, can you? So I want to make sure that there is that transparent process where, you know, there's a website where grant awards are, you know, whatever's available is out there and listed, and if, even if we don't go for all of them, at least people know, the council knows what's out there that's available, and then can work with our agencies and advocate, you know, for some of that funding. Is that in the plan?
I'll go back to Matt Garbark and talk about sort of what makes sense. Up to this point, there've been a few, really just a handful of awards that have been identified, and those awards were, whether it was MoGR or Matt directly forwarded to the corresponding agency, where we could make sure that those, at least the notices live on our website, and efficacy there, we'll talk about and maybe come back to you.
That would be super. I'm happy to work on that with you, review whatever information, that would be helpful. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Councilwoman McCray.
At a previous hearing, it was stated that the Recovery Office was in the process of standing up CFR 200 training for all ARPA grant recipients, so they can understand federal procurement laws outside of the city, that differ from the city. Just want to know, is that training now standing, and how many grantees, if it is standing, have received the training?
The first iteration of that training is actually this afternoon, and we'll have subsequent trainings as we award, make additional awards, but the first is this afternoon.
Okay. Do we know how many people signed up or are going to receive that training?
I can get that answer quickly, but I think that last I saw was probably about 30, because it's also our nonprofits, and there are several representatives from each organization that are attending. But we can get that number for you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
76.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just want to close out with one example that's been particularly frustrating for some time, and I think illustrates why I've been asking about, you know, restoration of city services, stockpiles of commonly-used supplies like flex posts and things of that nature. We've been trying to order a, but by we, the community and myself, have been interacting with wrecked parks to try and reorder or order a new sunshade for a park in my district, and a number of swings that are damaged or missing since last July. And it's just been particularly frustrating to go over a year without swing sets at a park for kids and to have a sunshade set up over the playground that we used to have, you know, when we have days like today that are, the county only knows, 95 or 100 degrees out there, insufferable. So I just wanted to share, you know, an anecdotal story of kind of the frustration of, you know, not having these types of supplies in stock. I know that some of the, you know, our municipal agencies that we deal with frequently, such as DOT and wrecked parks, have wanted to be in a position to be able to stock up on these things and have not been able to utilize ARPA funding to do that. So with that, colleagues, any other questions?
Just have one last one.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Could you go over with us, Director Kearney, how much has been committed? And given that we saw this morning or yesterday, there were new nonprofits that had been allocated, how much is left committed?
So it's 481 million. That doesn't include our funding announcement yesterday, which I think was just at 6.6. So if I do the math really quickly, that's about $494 million. If you subtract that from the 641 million, that leaves us about 150. But that is not to include, now recall that we have $80 million set aside for budget stabilization. As we continue to assess the economic condition and determine whether those funds are needed or not, those funds will then be available for additional projects.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. That was it.
Thank you. Colleagues?
Thank you all very much. We are now in recess.